Good morning. I'd like to call the February 20th, 2024, I had to look at what year it was, Board Meeting of the Scott County Commissioners to Order. Before we stand for the pledge, I'd like to just take a minute or two to reflect on the tragedy that occurred in our neighborhood on Sunday. I think right next door in Dakota County, but folks who have strong connections to Scott County. And so I want to take a moment of silence before we say the pledge, just to remember and honor the heroes who lost their lives, Paul Elmstrand, Matthew Rouge, Adam Finseth, and pray for healing for Adam Metaclot, and all their families, friends, and their colleagues. And it really makes us remember, which we stood every day, that we are calling our law enforcement officers, our first responders, to take those risks and in the good work that they do. So let's stand, and before the pledge, we'll just have a moment of silence to honor and pray and reflect. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the agenda has been posted and distributed. Are there any amendments to the agenda? See, none, and it'll stand approved as distributed. Next on the agenda are the minutes from our February 6, 2024 meeting. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Second.
It's been moved to the second to approve the February 6 minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is recognition of interested citizens. This is a time available for citizens to approach the podium and address the board on any item that is not on the agenda. Limit of five minutes. Is anybody here for that purpose? Too bad. All right. Thank you. Next, we're on to our main attraction, item number five, Scott County Delivers. We're going to hear about our Child Protection and Child Welfare Prevention Services. And Chris Harder, thanks for being here, and we'll let you get us started.
Good morning. We have a terrific panel of child welfare representatives, law enforcement, county attorneys. And we're going to talk today about a different way to do work. And it's one of the things I think you have challenged us to do, like can we work smarter? And this is a way to use our existing staff differently to expand what we can do in that prevention arena. And they're going to do a really nice job of explaining that. I think as we listen to them this morning, I'd like you to hear, this is not about widening the net. This is really about intervening with kids earlier that come back to our system anyway. And so it really is that expansion of prevention. I also want to remind you that it is new, and we're going to talk a lot about what data is coming, as much as we're going to talk about what data we have today. And towards the end, or really, I guess, at any point, we really welcome your feedback about what do you think about this idea? What kind of data would you want to see a year from now? What kind of outcomes would you want to see? This is in its infancy, so it's a great opportunity for you to share your thoughts and give some feedback. So with that, I'm going to ask the people on this side of the table to introduce themselves and who they are. And then we'll ask you folks to introduce yourselves, and then we'll get going.
Kate Solodzik, the Environmental Services Manager.
Hi, Carrie, we met, Economic Assistance Director.
Tony Wenke, County Highway Engineer.
Hi, good morning. Nikki Conway, Child Welfare Manager.
Good morning. Trish Meshky, Child Protection Supervisor.
Good morning, Deb Simonsen. I'm one of the child protection attorneys.
Captain Jamie Pearson, Jack P. Police.
Julie Swanson, Child Protection Supervisor.
Amanda Griffith, Child Protection Worker.
All right, Kate, are you going to start us off?
Yes. So I'm going to start with slide, or I'm sorry, page number six. That's the first pages. So it starts saying that youth need support from adults, and their family and beyond. And my question is, what are examples of beyond the connections that we're trying to make in the community? Is that like, is that teachers or coaches? And then what efforts has Scott County done to try to make those connections?
So I think this snapshot is really about all students in Scott County because it comes from the Minnesota School Student Survey. But part of this work that we are doing is, we just think it's foundational for young people and families to have networks of support, right? We all function on that in day to day, whether we're involved in systems or not, right? We need networks of support. And specifically for young people, right? There's a lot of talk about mentoring programs and just what a caring adult could do in their life. So I'll let Trish talk a little bit more about how we're doing that with this program.
Yeah, so the work that we're doing is really trying to help families have a safety network or a supportive network within their family life. So it could be anyone that maybe the family is already connected to, or the child, it could be a coach, it could be a teacher, like you said. It also could be a relative or a neighbor, or their child's friends' parents. So like really trying to, you know, get in, get to know the family, and figure out who might be that person that that child can connect with. And then the goal is really to formalize that connection so that when we close, that child knows and that adult knows that they are that child's person. So that in, like, the hope is that then that can prevent something from happening in the future, or it can just be a person that that child can go to if there's worries in their home.
Thank you. I wonder if, before we go on, if somebody, if one of you could just do just a quick overview of what this new initiative looks like. And there's a slide, a prevention slide on page two. If we can take a look at that. But if one of you could just explain what the work shift is, and then, like, I think that will kind of feed into Kate's last question.
Right, right. So overall, this is really about building up this whole continuum of service, right? So we have this goal of ending child abuse and neglect. The county has really funded this, and you all have been very supportive of this effort for the last several years, with the FRCs, with some of our truancy and neglect prevention, just all of the work that has been built out there. This is around, really, that bullet point around early intervention, right? So what we're seeing is, and what we have seen, are a number of young people, specifically teens, where we're seeing that we're intervening on this child protection response way on the deep end of this continuum, right? And, but what we looked at is there were a bunch of points earlier in the system, five or six times, that we could have maybe intervened at this early intervention point. And I know several people here could talk about examples of what that looks like. So what we're doing is really trying to move some existing resources. Our child protection team is highly nimble. They do a lot of really, really hard work. And they have the skills that are already built up to kind of create these networks and do this work with families. And so what we're doing is allowing them to intervene a little bit earlier, but we still have to keep their work in this deep end to just secure safety, too. So they can provide any one of these responses, early intervention, all the way through child protection response. It's not a secret that the numbers in child protection have been declining. And so this is an innovative way to continue to use people's time, although I know they have a lot of work to do on those deep end cases regardless, as we'll talk about, some of our court cases and petitions are still up where they were a long time ago when the child protection numbers started coming down. So the toughness, that's not the right word, but the complexity of the work remains really high, right? So overall, it's work that we would be doing on the deep end where we're just really trying to intervene earlier.
So kids that we haven't traditionally been serving or we've been underserving are now going to get attention earlier. Is that right?
Right, right.
Can you guess, Deb and Jamie, can you talk a little bit about that? About the kinds of kids that you see that kind of fall into this prevention, this new prevention framework?
Well, one case in particular, we had a youth who's now 15. I think she came into our system probably at age 11 or 12, running away. So we would get the runaways, but it would just get closed out, probably. And then it would turn into a 72-hour hold. A worker would get that, a plan would be developed, and then the case would get closed. So what I'm excited about with this new child welfare is a worker will get assigned, the case won't get closed. And if need be, we can have a multidisciplinary team, and we can all come together and map that case. And so we did do that in this case last year. The child got placed to do an evaluation. Now it's going to court. But had we intervened probably sooner on that case, I think we might have had a different outcome. Thanks.
Yeah, for us, I think it's, early intervention is going to be essential as well. We're the ones that are taking these runaway reports, you know, responding to these disturbances between kids and parents. And I think it's just essential that our officers are making the connections with the people at this table and the workers and building those relationships. So we have a point of contact from the start and can really get the ball rolling in terms of services that, you know, child welfare can provide. Thanks.
If I could follow up on that. So can you talk a little bit about that plan? What does that look like for the child, the parent, and then collectively the family when you're coming up with that plan?
Well, we just, I, maybe you want to talk about that. But, you know, in this one case, this child had a lot of mental health concerns. And so in this case, we did a 30-day eval at the JAF so we could figure out what services she needed. And I think things got better for a while after that evaluation. Some services kind of fell off again, unfortunately, and that's why we're going to court. I don't know if you want to speak?
Yeah, so I think that was actually prior to us really establishing this new way of doing the work. So that was still kind of the old way of doing the work. So you're trying to do maybe quicker plans, maybe not digging in quite as deep to what's going on in the family and trying to figure that out. So now we have that same child back again, and we are working in a different way with the family and really trying to support that family and figure out what they need, and not just doing kind of a quick safety plan and closing. So at this point, we've got some buy-in from the family. We've got a lot more information about what that youth is experiencing when they're out on the run. Lot more concerns are showing up. And so we're really looking at how can we do this differently and really trying to help this youth so that they can, you know, be a valuable member when they're an 18-year-old. They've got a few more years left, and we'd really like to get some things changed within that family unit.
One point of clarification, too, is we're seeing these, like, and people have pointed to this a little bit, these really time-limited interventions, because we want to be very cognizant about not furthering young people into the system, right? We don't want to stay open in child protective services for longer than we need to. And to sort of, again, kind of widen the net and see people in a deep end, because sometimes the longer we're involved, the more likely that is to happen, right? So there's some of this is, we're trying to do good work in that way by being very intentional and cognizant that we want to be able to close in an assessment and not stay open for case management. But sometimes what we see here in these types of cases is that if we see assessments opening and opening over and over again, right? Now, we know that that's an indication that what we have been doing isn't working, right? So this is not about necessarily intervening. It's about intervening in a different way, in a more, I don't want to say more proactive, but more thorough way, right? To really, really set the stage and do all of the work that's going to create lasting safety and lasting well-being for that young person so that we don't have these seven assessments open. We might have a two-year period on the front end that leads to, you know, less assessments later on. If that makes sense.
So a question, what kind of feedback are you getting from the children and the families as you're trying to get services to them earlier on? But they're voluntary, so are they open to it and excited about it? Have you gotten any feedback?
I mean, I would say so far, it's just so new. But like, there's some families that are less willing or less open to working with a worker and, you know, sharing their story and seeking support. However, if you approach it with the right, not the right way, but if you approach it in a different way where you're really trying to walk alongside the family instead of just, this is what you need to do, and here's a service, and then close your case, they see that you care. And I think they utilize the workers to really try to make things different for their family. I mean, I think Amanda could probably share a story more recently, one where it's, I think the youth was 17, close to 18. And I think it's just a great, like, I'll have you share it, but it's a great story of just, like, helping this kid as they're turning 18 and really supporting this family to try to be, like, better functioning and supporting of this youth and really trying to, like, give and take. When do I support this youth, and when do I hold them accountable? And it's just a huge supportive story, so I don't know if you want to share that.
Yeah, this was a case that we've had a few times. And he is close to 18, had an overdose where he ended up in the hospital early December. Not in school, but actually a star athlete. And I called the mom to reach out, but really, my hope is just to partner. And if I can share one thing that's helpful to them and to listen to them, to offer supports, really thinking outside of the box on some of these plans and being creative and encouraging. And that kid just bought a car with his parents on Friday. Is in school, has met with a person in his desired field. And it's all about that instilling hope and change and showing them what can happen. And, but we really partnered with multiple services in the county. We had Prior Lake Police come over, and we did a question and answer at the dinner table, just so that the kid and family knew everything. And both of these parents are, you know, so thankful and so appreciative of this work, just being able to call and problem solve through things and actually grow their network and work with them on how they can use their network in ways that feel really vulnerable to them. But really, that one is really exciting, and I'm really hopeful for him and his family. Very, very neat family.
Just if I can add one more thing, one of the, I think one of the things the family said was just how much better they are communicating as a family than prior to our involvement this time. And I know the previous time was maybe about a month before we got this report and prior to us starting this new way of intervening. And there was a phone call placed to the family, and they just said, no, thank you. And this time, just to see that big change in the family's life now, it's like hugely different than when it was a month before we got it back.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that.
I have a question on page eight, if we could turn to that. I feel like it's a little bit about what we're talking about currently. But could you just kind of in general explain the threshold at which a case is opened for case management? Like, does it vary depending on the situation? Or at what point, because it looks like there's assessment and then there's case management. So how do you make that decision?
I can take this one. In general, like, for an assessment is 45 days. So if, within that timeframe, the worker and the family, if there's significant safety concerns that the worker and the family can't address within that 45 days, and we need to see, like, a longer period of time of, like, sobriety or whatever the issue is, or if it's taking longer to develop a network that we need to support safety for that child, that's when we kind of look at opening those cases for case management. Or I suppose it could also be if the family isn't looking at addressing their safety concerns at all, then we likely open to case management as well.
Can we talk a little bit about, so what is it about the work that's happening in child protection? Like, part of this, as you can see on the data slide, is a trend downward just in the numbers, right? But what is happening within the work in child protection that makes it possible to free up staff time to do some of this additional prevention work? Can you talk about that?
Sure. I mean, I think that there's a lot of things that are impacting the numbers. It's probably not any one thing. But the child protection staff have the practice framework that really helps them look immediately at safety when we're first involved, but not stopping there and really trying to look at lasting safety for families beyond our involvement, which is why it's so critical that we have the Safety Network involvement. And people like Amanda are really good at talking with families about the importance of it, helping them to identify who their people are even when they think that they don't have them or maybe they want to live more in a place of secrecy, and helping them to see how they can come out of that and things can be better. And I think we've really seen that when we can shift from, like, safe enough right now to, like, safety sort of beyond us, the hope is that those networks are there for families, and they're not coming back in. Sometimes we see them come back in, but we also see in those instances that those networks were doing the right thing by those families and by the children. And while a report might come back in, the harm wasn't there because they acted. But my hope is also that they're just not even re-reporting back into our agency.
So that's sort of the mutual goal, right? Like, the child protection work is on mandated cases, trying to address safety and keep kids out of deeper end. The prevention work is about largely voluntary cases where you're doing that same engagement, but really for the same goal, is to keep kids safe and keep them out of the system.
Yes, and I think in all of our cases, we've tried to shift from just a focus on safety to safety and well-being.
Nice.
So we're looking at that even in child protection cases. We're looking at the well-being of the child and the whole family. But then also taking a look at these new instances that come in and say, where is this family really struggling? And well-being is low, and we think we might be able to offer some support to that.
Page nine. So you touched on this a little bit with some of your response. I'm assuming, so this is the timeliness of initial contact with kids. I'm assuming the goal is 100 ultimately. And so we're ahead of the state average, we're doing well. And I know that all these new initiatives are very fluid. But what are some, if we're truly to get there to 100, what are some key factors that would help us get there?
So these are, you know, we have state standards regarding which type of case, you know, how quickly we need to respond to that case, right? Regarding risk level, basically. So, you know, in certain types of abuse, right? We have to respond within 24 hours because it's egregious harm, and we need to make sure that we are ensuring safety in that moment and also with the eye towards the lasting safety. So there are different types of cases. So the reason we included this measure here is because in child welfare, so our child protection responses are mandated, right? But we can always refer to child welfare. Sometimes it gets a little bit confusing because we refer to the child welfare system as a whole, like, the whole system, right? But child protection response is our mandated response. Child welfare response is a voluntary response. And in the child welfare response, there aren't timelines per the state that we need to respond, right? But what we're finding, and what we have found, is that really the faster we can respond and the more we can engage, it's that window of engagement that we can find, right? So especially with these three types of cases that we have delineated here. In the POP, the Prevention of Placement, is a law enforcement, right? The contact with the family, and we're following up within 24 hours, right? So we've kind of created that timeline for ourselves because we've found that if we don't follow up in 24 hours, we might lose the window to engage with that family, right? And then same thing with the 72-hour holds, right? We have 72 hours, but the sooner, actually, I can speak with Amanda. I know I talked to her about a case not too long ago where she got, she was working on some pretty tough child protection stuff on a Friday afternoon, and she got a 72-hour hold case. And I knew she was busy and doing things, and I said, you can wait and follow up with that on Monday. And she's like, no, actually, I'm already meeting with that family on Saturday morning. I got a plan, I'm going to get that kid home. That's what's happening. So, I mean, we are really just lucky to have staff that we have and have the framework we have because we've got people that really care about young people and really want to engage in this work and do it right and do it well from the beginning.
Jimmy, in terms of the question, Tony's question about timeliness, do you see things on your side as law enforcement, things that are making it possible for the CP workers to get out there more quickly?
Well, I think they've implemented some things that are, you know, genuinely helpful, like the POP forms. The officers fill that out with the family right on scene at the time of the call. And then it gets directly sent to them so they can respond quickly.
Nice.
And, you know, that program has changed a little bit or is changing a little bit, but it's also been around for a little while. And I think it's been successful overall.
Okay, thanks. So I think you might have answered my next question, Nikki, when you were just talking. But I was curious about the differences in the totals between the table on page nine and the table on page 10. But my assumption, based on what you said, is that the graph on page 10 is specific to the child welfare activities that are voluntary, and they don't include all of the child protection reports that don't move into child welfare. Is that accurate?
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. So these are two different numbers. What we can speak to, though, too, and Trish could speak to this the best. She's created an internal work group that has really worked on how we're going to assess the data for child welfare over time. So I'll let you talk about kind of how we're doing that.
Sure. Prior to this new way of doing things, child welfare looks the same in our computer system. So there was no way to really track what type of child welfare case it was. So we've developed some codes that we have our intake department entering when they receive a report. That's going to help us be able to track which type of child welfare assessment we did. So we have actually several codes, but we've got POP. We've got 72-hour SEY run for runaway. And then we also have a code for disrupted permanency. That's one that we didn't highlight here today. But those are cases when, like, an adoption or a transfer of custody has occurred previously, and those parents are saying they can no longer parent that child. So those are those kind of cases that we accept as child welfare also to try to work on a plan for that youth and their family. So we've got a way to track them, which is going to be helpful for us to be able to pull up numbers in regards to which type of child welfare we've done how many reports on, and then also if those cases have turned into case management or just been the assessment.
As you can see, though, we have done child welfare. Like, we have worked these cases in the past, right? So this is really about how we're working them differently now. And our hope is, and maybe this is also for some feedback later on, is our hope is that this graph on page 10, after, in 2024, will look more like the graph on page eight. So you'll be able to see what are the differences. Like, we have different types of assessments in child protection, and we have them broken out, that you'll also be able to see that data in child welfare cases. So you'll be able to see how many runaway, how many SEY, how many 72-hour holds. And hopefully, then we'll analyze some trends from there. And we're continuously analyzing it as we go along as well.
SEY, sexually explicit use.
Yes.
On page 11, I'm wondering if somebody can talk about, what does it mean if your child protection numbers are going down, but your child protection petitions are not?
Sure. I can speak a little bit, and then maybe you can jump in.
Sure.
So just in regards to the petitions, is that what you're asking? I'm sorry.
Well, I think that what I'm asking is, what does it mean to you as professionals in the field if your overall numbers are going down, but your numbers of petitions are staying steady or maybe ticking up a little bit? What does that say about the cases?
To me, it says that the families that we are needing to serve have significant issues or problems that they're working through, that we still have that same amount of deep-end, hard cases that are going to, that are coming through, and those are the ones that we're bringing to court because of the seriousness and the concerns within that family.
Very nice way of putting it. I was going to say, they're just not cooperative. We need to have court oversight when these families just won't work with us. So I don't think those numbers are going down necessarily.
If you liken it to juvenile justice system reform, right? Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative did a lot of work on making sure that the right cases were, when you had young people that are totally overrepresented in juvenile detention, right? Where we used to put truance in juvenile detention 10 years ago, and we don't do that anymore because we realized it didn't work, right? So there was a ton of work in a lot of counties around making sure that people were going to detention for the right reasons, right? to detention for the right reasons, right? And then that sounds bad, but that's what it is, that it was really a public safety threat and not necessarily just because we couldn't manage it somewhere else, right? So I think of it in that same way, as like, what it shows us is that we are intervening with the right families, if that makes sense, and families that actually need that intervention because we have been able to do some of this preventative work, and we've done some great work in our deep end services that have kept, that have created the lasting safety and kept families safe at home.
Nice.
But it also speaks to the workload, and really, when we're working with all of these really complex cases, right? Even if the cases are dropping, that doesn't really feel like they're dropping to our workforce, so.
Right. I mean, I guess I would just add that for a while now, we've been talking about maybe the number of families that we're coming in contact with is smaller, but the level of work that we're doing, the hostility, the, just the complexity of the problems that people are facing has increased, I think dramatically. And I think that the families that we're not seeing are the ones that we use to kind of refer to as sort of like a one and done. You're going out, you're meeting with this family about something largely they've got it, they're generally a pretty well-functioning family, and you're not continuing to go out there and work with those. I think those are the families that we are seeing less of, which is a good thing, and that we're working with the families that we should be working with.
To that end, do you see multiple cases within a family? You've got a child that you're working with, and a couple years later, the next child, and then, so there's multiple within any one family?
Yes, I mean, I think we see a lot of generational situations, and that's what I think we're really trying to focus in on. How do we interrupt those patterns of abuse or neglect? Or within a child welfare response, like, how do we improve the well-being of children? And not, I think parents want better for their children than what they may be having, and how do we like tap into that and engage them around that?
Can you talk a little bit how you, within your teams, have talked about the role that the prevention focus has played? And page?
On page 12, there is a graph that shows just the historical numbers of children in out-of-home placement every year. And that is, that is clearly trending downward. So I'm wondering, as you look at the case numbers, and you just look at out-of-home placement numbers, like, how are you all talking about that on your team as far as how the CP work and the, and the prevention work are interfacing? That's a great question, Chris. I think we've done a lot of talking about just prevention in general, and the workforce knows that there's a big focus on prevention, and how are we going to help support that within our areas, this really, this child welfare work. So I think we've talked about how it supports less trauma to children, less intensive services needed for these kids and their families. So it's a way to really prevent those kids from getting in the deeper end, the placements, the court system, all of that. And I think, you know, workers, the workforce, they all understand it because it's helping those families, it's helping those kids. We all know that out-of-home placements can cause trauma to kids, so I mean, anytime we can try to work to prevent that or to shorten the length of placement, anything like that is helpful to families and children.
Can I ask one follow-up question to that? So you talked about intervening with kids when there are parent-child conflicts, maybe law enforcement's called, kids who run. Do you have the resources, like, through parenting or mental health or your own staff? Like, do you have the resources to serve these kids, these families?
I guess I could speak to, it's all about getting creative about it, you know? And yes, I know there are a number of areas through our mental health center who, you know, has been really good at engaging about more immediate therapy needs. Restorative circles is another idea that we have, but really calling and empowering these parents about who else is out there. We also have used our foster parents through a bridging connections program and been able to create mentors and create goals and check in on those goals, really using that framework around, that we use in our everyday practice about what kind of parent do they want to need and be, excuse me. And so building that rapport and then allowing for those conversations to happen, I think is key. There's so many other good resources, like, the schools are a great resource, are there other connections, other groups, other sports that that kiddo can be involved in. Treehouse and their mentoringship program has been huge. So I think there is, and that's the part of excitement when you're making that first call, is there are ideas out here. I have brought the Family Resource Center and the different groups that they have been providing is, is really fun to share with families as well.
Okay, so you're able to get people into what they need?
I, yeah. I believe I am.
Okay, thanks.
There are wait lists, of course. If you want more traditional services, like, the therapy is difficult to get people into one-on-one therapy at times, and family therapy can be a wait list as well. And that's why I think what Amanda's sharing more is those, a little bit more informal and more community resources, those are quicker to respond.
Right. And because we know, I mean, the continuum of care specifically in mental health for young people and adults, right, is clogged, right? We have, there are wait lists everywhere. And I think part of our framework is services don't equal safety, right? So if I'm in crisis in my own family, the first thing I don't want to do is, is make a call to some stranger and have somebody else come in my home. I want to figure out how I can utilize the resources I have, right? So therapy has a wait list, but I'm going to call my sister and talk to her, not that that's exactly the same thing, right? But, but to do the both and, to be able to help build up that informal network and the supports that you already have, I think it's, it's really kind of holding all those together. And, and again, we have folks that are super creative. In every situation is sort of case by case, but also, we've been pretty intentional lately about, and always actually very intentional about bringing in resources to make sure that our staff are aware of what's out there in the community and what folks can do, because we know we can't do it alone and we don't want to do it alone, right? I know that's a value of Scott County in general, is we have to hold that balance.
And just one more question. So you mentioned about the mental health piece. So where do the school-based mental health workers fall in this process?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that. When we started our child, child welfare work group, before we started doing this work differently, we talked a lot about, like, collaborative partnerships for this work. We talked about, oh, I'm going to forget the name.
I don't know.
So, oh, coordinated response. So like, there's several of those workers that we have connected with on some of these cases and gone out and done some of this child welfare work together with coordinated responder workers. So that's been super helpful. Like, school-based social workers, the workers, if the kids are in school, they're going to connect with them for the most part and try to work with that youth and the school as far as maybe that youth needs more help at school, or maybe the school worker can be kind of a check-in person for the youth. So I mean, they're, they're constantly working on what kind of partnerships can they kind of pull together within families.
We can turn to page 13. So this is the out-of-home placement rates by ethnicity. Can you talk a little bit about either strategies that are in place or ideas on strategies? Because I know a lot of this is new for groups that are overrepresented.
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, I think, I don't know if we all know, but I think we all know that these rates are similar across the state, right? Where there are huge racial and ethnic disparities in our child protection system, actually across the nation and state. So I think here, which is a trend I think we're seeing in a lot of places, this two or more races number continues to rise. I think first of all, as our communities become more diverse and intertwined, and secondly, it has, it has a lot to do, in my personal opinion, around how we categorize race. So our statewide SSIS, our reporting system, has some limitations for how we gather people's race and ethnicity. And so lots of people end up needing to check more than one box because we have limited categories. Like, for example, African-American, black is all one category, right? It doesn't, it doesn't break down, whether that's East African, Somali, or African-American or West African, all of those things. So I think, I'll let Julie speak to the framework, because I think the framework has a lot to do with how we work with families, where they're at individually and can speak to this, and then they could speak to some more sort of systemic approaches as well.
Well, I was just, I was going to say, I think our best tool is to just avoid placement altogether. And the number one way that we do that is using our practice framework to take a look at engaging a network around this family. We have, we have foster care, they have so much more that they can offer. They have aunts and uncles and friends and cousins and people who care and can come and sit down in the family living room and really talk about the plan and what the intervention can be so that we're not having to look at out-of-home placement to begin with.
And I think targeted, we are, what we are doing in children's services right now is really trying to have some very targeted conversations around this as well, just in general, with how are we culturally competent and how we serve? And then also utilizing the community-based resources that we have, right? The FRC being one, and some of our cultural liaisons, the schools all have cultural liaisons and navigators, so, because the same disparities exist in truancy data and other things as well. So this is a, this is a, we could have a whole Scott County delivers on this topic probably at some point.
Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
So I wanted to ask Jamie, one, I want to thank you for being here. This has not been an easy weekend, and your being here is just a testament to how you support our community. So, and I see Amanda sitting behind you, but you've been involved in treatment court and co-responder, and now I see you here with our child protection, which I think just shows the commitment to our youth. Are there things we could be doing? Scott delivers all about getting better. Things we could be doing better to coordinate with you in child protection and POPs or trainings, or things we should be doing with the PDs that could even help improve this program more?
I think the team that sits here has done a really nice job in keeping the relationship strong. We're working on, I don't know, maybe it's been scheduled, but we're having some of these folks come to some of our in-service training to deliver the same kind of similar message so the cops know the work that they're doing, you know, after we aren't involved anymore. So I really, I really think the relationship that we've built with child protection and this, the whole team is very strong, and I think that's why it works well.
Well, I know we've embedded in co-responder, I'm assuming we wouldn't follow that model in child protection just from, but do we have that strong a relationship with other PDs as well, or is Shakopee unique here, or do we feel good about it everywhere?
I mean, I can't speak for these folks, but I think their relationships are strong countywide. Yeah, they do real good work, and we're very team-oriented, and I think their relationships are strong countywide.
Thank you.
As far as like the co-response, I know we have Jamison in Shakopee, and he's amazing. If we wanted to pull him in on a Shakopee-specific child protection or child welfare matter, I have no doubt that he would jump at that opportunity and help us.
What would you like to be able to report back to this board a year from now or two years from now in terms of outcomes for this new intervention?
Yeah, I think one thing that we are most definitely tracking already and looking at tracking is this really, is this connection to caring adult. And so that's something that we think is very important, and I think has shown in research all over the place is very important. So that's, that's one thing that we feel, because there's so many things in a system, right, that you don't have control over, that's one thing that we feel like in doing this work really well, we have some control over ensuring that that piece is paramount, and that before we close a case, that is, that is one piece of it that needs to be there. So, so we're hopeful to be able to report back on things like that. We are building out a new dashboard for child protection to look at, not necessarily just the numbers, right? We have SSIS, we all know what our problems are with our statewide reporting systems that we have, but not just looking at the raw numbers, like, how many runaways, how many truance, how many POP, those kind of things, but to look at how we're doing the work, right? Because we focus so much on the numbers, we've talked a little bit about case-specific examples and stories, right? But it's really, so much about it is not what we're doing, it's how we're doing what we're doing, right? And so to be able to, to look at that, so in our practice framework, how many of us are, what, what tools are we using to engage with families? How are we connecting kids with caring adults? What does that look like? So those types of things, so that's one measure. And again, we're coming here today, I think, really early on in this process because we're very open to feedback and, and we want to ensure that we're getting this right and that we're doing this in the way that Scott County and, and you all, you know, want us to carry out the work. So that's a piece of it. And then I think generally speaking, I mean, the hope is that we continue to prevent kids from coming into the deep end, obviously. Are these numbers going to show us that in the next year or two? Probably not, right? Those are long-term goals, so I don't know, like, I don't know how much we can put stake into that, but I think we want to continue to see that the, from that continuum slide, we want to continue to see sort of work moving up that slide to the left, right? I don't know if others have things to add.
I can add just that we're taking a look at three different tools that workers can use as they're working through these assessments. We're going to be training the staff in the next month. There's three different tools, I think both, two of them I think are from the U of M, but one is the Youth Connection Scale, and another one is the Child Well-Being Indicator. And then there's an SEY tool that we're going to be trained on as well. So those are some ways that we can kind of assess some things and track some data potentially. And then also, like Nikki mentioned, the dashboard that the supervisors are now using, we're going to, I think, try to add in something amongst the child welfare platform where we can speak to, like, if that youth, if we were able to formalize a connection for that youth to an adult supportive role. So hopefully we can do that.
Last questions from the facilitators? No?
Nikki, where does public health fit into this with follow-along and some of the skill sets that they have? I would think that would be a part of this as well from prevention and able to utilize or be at the continuum.
Yeah, yeah, I can actually.
Yeah, so one of the child welfare parts that we took over is prenatal cases, so those used to go to our PSOP department. And so those ones, we, part of our protocol is that we team immediately with public health nursing and we go out together. That's for that. And then I guess what might help clarify a little bit for the partnership with public health, most of our child welfare cases are 11 and older children, so public health doesn't really fit into that piece of the spectrum. They're really more zero to five, maybe?
Yeah, the home visiting models as well, but I think there's always opportunities to expand and connect, so.
I was just going to ask why, so.
Yeah, yeah. Family home visiting is really based on that zero to five, right? So some of the things, some of, they're, they're in that early intervention space a lot based on what they're charged with doing, and I'm not a public health expert, so I shouldn't speak on that so much. But I think it's a good question, and there's always ways to, to reach across and break down some silos. So I have a feeling that might be a recommendation that comes.
Amanda, if you could see one thing different next year, what would it be?
Oh, I think the, the team that we have that I work with is amazing. And so I think something that would be different next year is just working more of these, working with more families and sharing it and growing within our team. There's a lot of collaboration, a lot of phone calls, a lot of consultation before we jump to things. And so just more of that. We, child welfare is new for us to be taking, and so learning from each other and sharing different ideas, going out with each other has been a really good experience.
All right, Madam Chair, I will return it to you.
Thank you, and thank you so much to the panel. We'll open up for questions in a minute, but I, I just want to start off for all of you in the room, and I know some of you in the room who are not on the panel, and those watching, and those who can't be watching because they're out doing the work, I, I just thank you. This is foundational government work that we wish we didn't have to do, right? We wish we didn't have to do, but this is one of the things we need to do because nobody else can, can do it. I, I know it's hard, I know that you I know that you have to have that passion for it. But what's even better is really watching the past, past seven years, how many of you in the room who've been here that long and longer, and this team has evolved and grown and wanted to do things different. I think it's just a real testament to what we should be doing all over government. So I just want to add that appreciation. Ditto to Leslie's comments about Sergeant Pearson. Thank you for being here. And yeah, you're here all the time. It just shows how collaboratively we are working. And I think we need to call attention to it because people would be surprised that that happens. So I, I do have comments, but I'm going to open it up to my colleagues first. Commissioner Ellerick.
I was so relaxed this morning. I was thinking, boy, you're, you're really relaxed and more so than normal with the county board until this presentation. I've kind of relived my life as I've heard this presentation. I was a runaway. I was dramatically truant. I was kicked out of the house. I was homeless. And so I, I've gone all through a lot of this. And the most important slide to me is page six. It's the caring adult. If I didn't have a caring coach and a caring teammate, I'm sure I wouldn't be here. And so what I want to say is, to me, this is the most important slide. Every slide is important. All that you do is important. So I'm not minimizing anything else. But to me, this is the most important. And if we were to have a strategic plan of how to get more kids connected with caring adults, if we were to devote a staff person, that's your only job, is this slide, improve these numbers. And maybe there already is somebody that that's their job. But, you know, coaches, and I've been through all, through sports, they're more focused on playing better, better strategies for winning, how we do it as far as winning. You know, even if we were to have a seminar for coaches, you know, coach as a caring adult, you know, or there's all different ways you could get at that, chip away at these numbers. And I, I think this, I just encourage you on this slide, and I'm glad Nikki highlighted it. Because there are a lot of kids that are going through, like what I did, that I would have never made it. I was never physically abused. I was never abused in any other way. And it wasn't true, and I probably was truant enough in modern times to be connected to the county, but back then they didn't do that so much. I don't know how I ever graduated, but I did. Anyhow, so, but a lot of work can be done here. And I hope there's like a strategic plan and really staff devoted to this, this one. So that's what I'd have to say.
Thank you for sharing that. You have something?
Thank you. So some of these things were, were covered. I just need a little more clarity. So the topic here is enhanced child welfare prevention. So we got a highway engineer slash administrator slash administrator slash highway engineer. Is the old way of doing things more of a T-bone perpendicular, like, hey, something's happening and you guys come in and just hard, not necessarily hard, but like you're intervening. And what was, what was the phrase, hey, you do this, 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 and this, and we can close our case? And now this enhanced is, we all know the candy bar, I think, right? There's another, what do we call those? A J-cut? Where you're making this crazy kind of, you're, you're intervening in traffic, but you're kind of coming alongside and side-swiping them and trying to kind of ride with them? Is that sort of the, you're coming alongside, you're getting messy with them, you're trying to make real change? I heard the word hope, I think, was down this way, giving people hope and transformational, like Tony talked about, somebody talked about generational or other kids. Like, is this side-swiping effect and then riding alongside them? And I know we're semi-early-ish.
Or is it roundabout?
Well, that's, I don't know. We want to get, we want to get going north, you know, northbound. Is that, are, are we seeing, I mean, some of these stories we've heard. We always hear some of these stories and they're amazing. I mean, give me a pep in my step walking home. It has to for you because golly, I always think about this work. I'm like, oh, man, that is tough, tough work. You have to be called to do it. But coming alongside, seeing some of this hope, maybe some transformation hopefully along the way to break that generational cycle? Like, are, do you see glimpses of that? Are you getting sniffs of it?
Can I say something? I mean, sort of yes and no. One piece of it in child welfare, I think what we did before was a lot more of a phone call and offering services. And that was it. And so now how do we identify where the families that need more than that? And then, yes, we're coming in alongside of them. I think that, I'd like to think that we, it's been a really long time since we've come in with the hard approach of do this, this, and this. But that we're seeing the need to tap into those engagement skills that we've always done with the child protection level families, but like bringing that practice framework into the child welfare and knowing when to offer more and come alongside the families.
And just to be clear, those were gross overgeneralizations. But I think we all get the point of where it was going with that. Because it seems like the old way, we'll call it, could be faster. Hey, I intervene, check, 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 boom. Who's next? Now serving, whatever. And now, if you're really coming alongside somebody, that has to be much more time consuming. You kind of talked about some of the numbers and some of these slides are going down, but if you had staff, you'd say like the workload is up. And I get that. I mean, that has to be true, right? If you're intervening, you're spending time, it's messy. Life on life is rarely clean. It's messy. But that's what leads to outcomes. And we're seeing that, right? We're seeing it on some of these slides.
Yep, absolutely. And I think that what we're saying about the check the box kind of approach, your traffic analogies are totally over my head, by the way.
Well, Leslie will explain it. Leslie will explain it.
Tony would be able to explain it better.
Well, I'll meet with Tony.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I understand what you have.
Side swipe versus T-bone. Let's go with that. Much softer.
But that, that, that approach, I think what we saw is it just leads to having to do that seven times, right? So it's like, it's not working, right? Exactly what you're saying. So this transformational work takes, it is messier. It takes more time and energy. And we are having, we're having difficult, complex conversations about it too, because we are very cognizant about which are the right families to intervene with in this way and which aren't, right? We want to, we want to get that right. And I mean, we even just, or the folks in the room here just had a mapping internally about what's going well, what's not going well, what are next steps. And something that came out of that, just a very real example, is like Amanda is a child protection worker and she has child protection worker on her business card. And if we're engaging with the family in this way, what, what message does that send? Do we need to introduce ourselves differently? Like those, that level of conversation are things that we're talking about, right, in how we engage with families. So lots of messy conversations to come throughout the year. And, and our hope is, you know, you'll continue to engage in that with us. And we have some things to show in the next couple of years.
Well, that's what I think we're all interested, everyone in this room and this building, is how do we do this better to work ourselves all of a job, knowing that the need is, is there, right? Last question, I think, comment, was it page two, I think it was, kind of that continuum with some of those different logos in there? It, it feels like there is a very open and willing heart to work with whatever partner best fits the scenario, best, best fits the situation. So, because I'm excited about what the FRC is and what it can be, you know, some dreaming of what that could look like. Because that's kind of launching here as well and semi-new. I have heard it in this presentation, but I just want to hear it again. Do you feel like if some of these, I'll just call them filters, some of these different logos on here, like are actually catching some of these people as they're coming through the pipes? They're not getting down to the deep nitty-gritty, however you want to categorize that, like, is working?
I mean, I can speak, obviously, I've been here the least amount of time, so I probably shouldn't speak to this. But what I will say is the relationship piece, so I don't have a great sense of the numbers, but what, what Captain Pearson talked about as far as the relationship piece, I feel like I've said this before, but having other county experience and coming from other places, like, it is very obvious here, the tight-knit relationships and collaboration that happens with community, with law enforcement, with, with all of the entities. And that doesn't happen in that same way in other places. And so I, I do think that is, that is something that can't be overstated, really. Like, that sticks out to me and that, and, and it, I'm glad I'm here. But also, it's just really a great testament to, to work and, and conversations like this that have continued to happen here over the last several years. So I don't know if anyone else has an answer to that. Community-based organizations?
Can I answer part of that? And so I think as these new programs have been developed, as, as we have had conversations about what we can say for sure about the impact of prevention, right? Because we all want to know, is that really working? There's, there's several ideas out there about new data collection. The Family Resource Center just, I think, just turned on the new software, did you?
About to.
Yeah, or about to turn on the new stuff. So we have some data, like some actual data that we'll be collecting here over many of these programs to bring forward to you soon. And I know that's probably not soon enough, but.
Well, I get it. I mean, it's, I mean, we all want to bring transformational change. We want change. And what's the best way of doing that is what we're, what we're after. Thank you.
And I think, Commissioner, though, the, the point there is they're using the community resources, the FRC is using them, and they are seeing them as part of the solution, which has been the drive that this board has been pushing us towards.
I really don't have any questions. Administrator Vemillion, I already asked mine. But I do understand when a family is in a position at the very start and they are, you know, what do we do next? You know, we have this issue, what do we do next? And we don't want to call in Officer Pearson to come into our home to resolve it. So I appreciate the fact that we are working on those beginning things and how do we connect people to those groups so that they don't become a spiraling out of, spiraling out of control and become a bigger issue. So I guess I don't have any questions. I was really surprised at the 11th grade numbers where people were connecting to adults and how that number has decreased over the last couple of years. So it's those older kids, you know, that need that help as much as the younger kids. So I appreciate the work that you're doing.
All right. Couple things. One, I think you guys reminded us that we often have to look at our values again and adjust. Because one of the values that this board's been saying a long time is, you know, we don't want government in family life. We, we kind of want families to have rights and be able to deal with things on their own unless we're really needed. Well, you're really showing us that sometimes we need to be involved longer to not be involved deeper. And I think this is good for us to understand. And, and thank you for bringing that up because I, I do think that is a little bit of a value shift over the last couple of years. Couple notes I made. One, I, I just am thinking about this caring adult, Commissioner Ellerick's, you know, strategy importance, let's keep going on it, you know, together we can, could be working on this and being helpful in, in that level too. So I, I'm just saying all loud so somebody reminds me at the next meeting to bring that up again. You've asked a couple of times for, for feedback. And I think that we've all gotten, as we keep getting better at these presentations and this data, we keep thinking of even, even more ways to get better. One thing that I think would be helpful to me, but for other people just looking at this for the first time, in this area especially, we need a couple of basic definitions of, you know, child protection and child welfare and assessments, investigations, and case management, especially when you can have assessments in child protection or child welfare, those types of things, maybe just a little bit of definitions there. And though even, I, I really like Nikki, what you're talking about on, on our outcomes and what we're looking for, we need that. But as we look at putting resources into this, not putting resources into this, changing the way we support, we still do, do need those numbers. And it might be, like, we see those child welfare numbers increasing, maybe with case management and child protection going down, maybe just even a snapshot and about those things. Because I found, I think, I can't remember if it was Kate or Carrie brought up, there were a couple of times when I looked at totals, and then the totals didn't match, and then I'd have to figure out why. Like, we, we might just need a snapshot of that, not for really talking through this work, but as we talk through allocation of resources and understanding how resources might need to shift. And then I, I'm a very big believer in this prevention work and, and want to keep supporting it. But I think what you're really showing us is that on the horizon, as we're working with those families to not enter the child protection area, and hearing Deb and Tricia talk about the CHIPS cases and those, Nikki, I think you talked about the toughness, the toughness of some of those situations, we need to start figuring out those commonalities and where, you know, that's like the next horizon. Now that we're dealing with this first part, where can we really make a difference in those families that, you know, for all this, we still haven't reached earlier? What are those commonalities? What can we do? Because until we get there, we're never going to work ourselves more out of a job. We need to know that. It's going to be hard, full audacious stuff. But I, I think we need, that's on the horizon. Once you accomplish all this, you know, like the next, the next step. So I just want to say thank you. Excellent presentation. Thank you to everybody who does this work. It is hard. It is important. It is life-changing and life-saving. So any final comments from the board? All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We will, as we're having some people exit the room, we will move on to consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda have been previously, and maybe we'll just wait a minute till people can get out. Do you need to say something?
No, sorry.
We'll wait a minute till we adjust here.
Talk to the.
It's not an official recess, but, yeah, just a pause. I think that's a good way to put it. All right. We'll be moving on to our consent agenda. These items are slated to be approved with one motion unless removed for further discussion or consideration. I'll read through these items for your consideration. Item 6.1, to adopt resolution number 2024-15 approving the preliminary and final plot of endeavor second edition and conditional use permit to construct and lease buildings for indoor storage and business uses. SBT Incorporated, applicant and property owner in section 13 of New Market Township. Adopt resolution number 2024-48, authorizing entering into an agreement with the state of Minnesota designating County Highway Eight as a trunk highway, 282 detour route in 2024. 6.3, to adopt resolution number 2024-50, authorizing the contract award to Valley Paving Incorporated for the 2024 pavement preservation program bid package A. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2024-51, authorizing the contract award to OMG Midwest Incorporated, DBA Minnesota Paving and Materials for the 2024 paving preservation program bid package B. 6.5, to adopt resolution number 2024-55, authorizing Scott County's continued joint participation with Carver County in the Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program. 6.6, to adopt resolution number 2024-56, awarding a contract to JTS Construction for the Doyle Kenefick, Kenefick Regional Park Trails Project. 6.7, to adopt resolution number 2024-58, vacating part of the right-of-way along County Highway 87 in the city of Credit River. 6.8, to adopt resolution number 2024-61, supporting rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant for Highway 13 and Niclet Avenue mobility improvements in the city of Burnsville. We are good neighbors. 6.9, adopt resolution number 2024-62, authorizing submittal of a rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant application for the Minnesota River Crossing and Flood Resiliency Study. 6.10, adopt resolution number 2024-63, accepting grant funding and authorizing entering into grant agreements with the Metropolitan Council for the development of Miriam Junction Regional Trail with funding from the Council's fiscal year 2024 Recreation Open Space Development Grant Program and the 2024 Fiscal Year Parks and Trails Legacy Program. 6.11, adopt resolution number 2024-65, accepting grant funding and authorizing entering into a grant agreement with the Metropolitan Council for hazard tree removal and.
into a grant agreement with the Metropolitan Council for hazard tree removal and ash tree replacement in Scott County regional parks and authorizing a park operating budget amendment. 6.12, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-66, accepting grant funding and authorizing entering into a grant agreement with the Metropolitan Council for construction of the Cleary Lake Regional Park Campground Shower and Bath Building. 6.13, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-73, authorizing the submission of the 2024 to 2025 Community Corrections Comprehensive Plan to the Department of Corrections and Acceptance of the Annual Subsidy. 6.14, to approve the appointment of citizens to advisory committees. 6.15, to approve the renewal application for 3.2% malt liquor license for Union Hill Baseball Association in Belle Plaine Township and St. Patrick's Athletic Association in Cedar Lake Township for 2024. 6.16, to approve the renewal application for Scott County On-Sale Wine License for Union Hill Baseball Association in Belle Plaine Township for 2024. 6.17, to approve payroll processing of personnel actions. 6.18, to approve record of dispersments and approve claims. Colleagues, those are the 18 items on consent. Are there any that you'd like removed for further discussion or a separate vote?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve all 18 items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? See, no discussion?
Can I just add one thing, Madam Chair? You'll see Doyle Kennefick is on there. This is one of the ARPA projects and a big step forward for improvements at Doyle Kennefick. So it was a very good project.
Agree. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. That was a weak tap. We're moving on to item 7.1, which is to adopt Resolution Number 2024-52, adopting Scott County Ordinance 35, the Scott County Housing Trust Fund. And Barb Dahl is here to get it, to kick off this item.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Promise you, I only have one slide today. We will just do a quick recap that I think, as I stated, we will be adopting an ordinance related to the establishment of a housing trust fund. During our February 6th board meeting, a public hearing was held, and during this time, we touched base on a little bit of the background that led us to this moment. And so just a quick overview and recap of that. For one, we have our Scott County strategic plan that has been identified with a housing objective where all partners will come together to support expanded resources. We also discussed that during the 2023 legislative session, we had four different opportunities through board workshops to look at how we wanted to prioritize our involvement across the housing continuum. And ultimately, we landed on prioritizing transitional and supportive housing, housing access or housing stock and prevention. I think the 2023 legislative session also really provided historic investments, and we saw that through two different aid programs. One is the statewide affordable housing aid, which gave 211,000 approximately last year to Scott County. We'll receive that also this year before that is decreased in out years. And then we also have the local affordable housing aid program, and this is anticipated to be 3.6 million annually. And this is going to be funded through the metro-wide sales tax of 2.5%. That first payment will come in July of this year. So this is, this funding here gives us an opportunity to establish the housing trust fund where these, some of these funds can be deposited. And this will be maintained and administered by the Scott County Community Development Agency on behalf of Scott County. The county and the CDA will also enter into an agreement following this, kind of setting out some of the specific expectations, looking at how this will be managed moving forward. Also, any counties that wish to be, or any cities that wish to be a part of this, will also have the opportunity to do so. And I think, as Julie pointed out, the advantages of the housing trust fund include increased flexibility. I think we have the opportunity to kind of look at how this will provide some additional planning, and we can leverage some of these funds moving forward. We also discussed that we had letters of support from Shakopee, Credit River, Jordan, Savage, and Prior Lake. And I would report that we have had no additional changes after this was reviewed with the Scott County CDA after our last board meeting. So with this, we would seek adoption of this ordinance.
Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I would make that motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-52, adopting Scott County Ordinance 35, Scott County Housing Trust Fund.
Wonderful. And if we could get a second? Okay, a second, and then some comments.
I just want to comment. I think maybe you said that in there, but the CDA also reviewed this last week and agreed to the collaboration.
Commissioner Veer.
Just to clarify, the laha, that's the ongoing .25 of the new 1% sales tax that was agreed upon by the state.
Yes, correct.
So I just want to clarify that because I don't know if you guys have had some discussions or some emails or some phone calls. That is not a, Scott County did not enact a new sales tax. It's the .25. We're all paying the 1% in the metro. .75 goes to roads generally, and .25 goes to this housing generally. And this is our estimation, so.
Transportation, I'd say.
Yep, the origination of that sales tax.
Oh, boy. Okay, I'm gonna hit red right here.
Yeah, the origination of that sales tax came out of last legislative session.
Yes, wonderful. Just two thoughts, if you could remind us, what would be the timeline for the CDA county plan that we've talked about a couple of times?
Yeah, I, we will be getting together as soon as this is done, and we'll be putting together some of the parameters on that. I would hope that we would get that out by later this spring. I would like to add to, with the affordable, with the SAHA money, the statewide affordable, the first $100,000 of an investment from the county, that will come from that funding. And that was as far as a fiscal note moving forward to help get the trust fund started.
And will the county CDA plan be approved at the staff level, or will that come to board for approval?
Madam Chair, that'll come to the board. We'll have a work session on that. But I think it just really lays out the authority levels of the director versus the CDA board, and the board has to authorize it. So it's more the operating factors of it that you'll see, and that will come to a work session.
Wonderful. Thank you. And before the vote, I just, Julie's here, just want to thank you for all your work on this. Thank your board for being a great partner. It's, I think, a good thing for all of us and all of our cities to do this work together. Any further discussion? If not, I'll favor the motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 7.2, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-26, approving the preliminary plat, final plat, and conditional use permit for Marystown Estates consisting of two lots on eight acres. DJS Enterprises LLC, applicant and property owner, in Section 35 of Louisville Township. And colleagues, this this item is typically an item that we might see on consent, but because there was a little bit of discussion and a few differing views on this one, it is on our agenda just for our review for us. So, Mr. Wagner, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So as you indicated, this is the preliminary plat, final plat, and conditional use permit for Marystown Estates. So on the screen, you'll see the site location map of the two parcels in question. These are located in the hamlet of Marystown. And to remind the board, we have several small communities in Scott County that we call hamlets. And the seed was planted with the 2030 comp plan about 12 years ago by some township board members and a couple of planning commission members about these small rural communities and how do we keep them going? How do we allow things in these, you know, crossroad areas? And so when we did the 2040 comp plan in 2017, 2018, 2019, we met with the townships. We also held some open houses in Blakely and, I believe, Spring Lake Township that talked about, you know, the Marystown, Union Hill, St. Patrick, Lydia, and Blakely, and what types of uses could be allowed in here, and how do we keep these things going? So when we adopted the 2040 comp plan, we incorporated the hamlet mixed-use overlay district, which allowed for unique uses in these hamlet areas, both residential, so it was to allow single-family residential on substandard parcels, but also commercial. So like your rural restaurants, your rural taverns, we would allow small office uses, things that would be supportive of these rural communities. And so the county has received this application for the two parcels highlighted on the screen to plat the properties as two modified lots. Here's an aerial photo of the property. So you can see on the smaller parcel, which is a three-quarter acre property, that there is an existing house. The existing house does have a non-compliant septic system. The rear parcel is closer to seven acres, but is landlocked. So as part of this request, the applicants are required to plat the property. They're also required to identify two septic sites for the vacant parcel. But since the existing home is on a non-compliant septic system, they also have to find a replacement and future alternate site for that property. And so here is the plat. I don't think I can zoom in, but I'll just point out, so the house is here. The replacement septic system for that lot is right here, future alternate. And then we have a future home location on the rear lot and two septic sites here. So the benefit of this plat, not only through what is allowed under ordinance, but we are replacing a non-compliant septic system and modifying the parcels so that that parcel will increase to just over an acre. And the rear parcel will actually get frontage to a publicly maintained road to make it legal, which is part of county ordinance. As the chair said, oh, here would be the final plat. So as the chair said, when this item was published for a public hearing, the applicants did attend the Louisville Town Board meeting and received a recommendation for denial from the town board. The county received that recommendation with an attachment from the township's consultant planner, which was included in your packet. The determination by the township's consultant planner was that the two parcels are not legal lots, that they should be, should have been combined as one property. I do want to state, in county ordinance, it is not required that these be legal lots of record. The hamlet mixed-use overlay district says that they are vacant substandard lots. It did not require it to be a lot of record. However, that was a Thursday. The next day after receiving that recommendation, county staff did research the history of the property as best we could and determined that the parcels were lots of record. A lot of record would be any parcel that was created before October 29, 1971, which is when Scott County really adopted its first zoning ordinance. So anything that existed before that date would be a legal lot of record, essentially grandfathered in. So we researched that with the county recorder, found out that the parcels were indeed lots of record. We also then reviewed it with the county auditor Cindy Geis, who is here, if you have any questions for her, and with the county attorney's office. So that happened on that Friday ahead of the public hearing. Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, and I had a call with the township consultant planner that afternoon. There was just no agreement between the town planner and county staff. We presented this information to the planning commission that following Monday night at the public hearing. The town board chair and clerk both spoke at the public hearing about this issue, and they referenced their town planner's memo. But again, we had sent the information to the township, and we presented it to the township members in attendance and to the planning commission. The planning commission ultimately recommended approval 7-0, or excuse me, 6 to 1 of the plat and conditional use permit. And then we also reviewed with the county title examiner Bryce Hugh Miller following that meeting, and he agreed with county staff's interpretation that these are two separate legal parcels that the county has always taxed separately. And so he indicated that the township was misinterpre, or township planner was misinterpreting. I should note, we also did offer the township planner a couple of opportunities with Cindy Geis copied to have a conversation with Cindy, Ms. Geis, but that was not accepted or no response was received. So staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. I would stand for any questions. As I indicated, Cindy Geis is here as well.
Wonderful. Colleagues, your pleasure. Should we get motion on the table? Have some discussion?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-26.
All right. Any discussion? Mr. Wagner, great. I understand all that, and I agree. I see the conclusion of two lots. I'm wondering about, on Cindy's memo on page two, do we have any response to those comments about if it really was two parcels? She referenced some parts of our ordinance. My thought is maybe our hamlet overlay ordinance supersedes this, where she says, I think this is right from our ordinance, where legal non-conforming lots of record cannot meet the lot standards, blah, blah, blah. The lot shall be combined into a single lot for zoning purposes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, so that is language that is included in Chapter 3, which is our non-conforming chapter of the ordinance. That had, while that does exist, the intent of the hamlet mixed-use was to allow some of these separate, non-contiguous parcels to be built on within the hamlet district. So if this was outside of the hamlet overlay, we would not be going down this path of approving a plat like this. And specifically to your question on the non-conforming, that is something that the county does use in certain circumstances where we are aware that a property is in common ownership. We have not gone to the lengths of doing the extensive research to find all the parcels that are in common ownership. I believe our tax department did do something a few years back where they sent letters to residents where it's like, you know, hey, you have two parcels, you're getting two tax statements, they're substandard, do you wish to combine these? But that is a very large effort. But I should say that we do require this when somebody is replacing a septic system, and their septic system is going to go on their other parcel. We reference this section. It's like, okay, now you need to combine the properties and make it one because we don't want a septic or having them put a shed or an accessory structure on the other parcel, and then they sell it. And we don't have control over that. So when those types of permits come in, we do use this to require them to combine, but it's not something that the county has really undertaken the huge effort to enforce every parcel in that situation.
Thank you for that. I must say, I really support our hamlet overlay district and think that I support this preliminary plat. I think this is a good opportunity, though, and would ask that, since the township planner did some of the work for us, that we revisit some of these and see if we need some language changes, some of the shall in there. Because I understand the concern of where it came from, based on the words of our ordinance. So would just ask that we maybe revisit that so that we're not kind of stuck in this quandary again, and maybe make some language changes. So thank you for that. Any other discussion on this matter? All right. And just to staff, thanks for bringing this forward. I agree that when we have some, I don't even want to say controversy, but some differences in opinion, it makes sense to bring this to the board, that the board should be accountable for the decision. So, thank you. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Our next item is to, and I'm just going to look at our schedule here. We're ahead of schedule. Colleagues, would, would we, would anyone object to us moving committee reports and commissioner updates ahead of our recess, just to make our adjournment?
We have to come back.
Well, I knew we have to come back, but just as far as. Well, I knew we have to come back, but just as far as...
There's people waiting?
People here. No, that's fine. Oh, there's people waiting. All right, we will recess. Do we need a motion to recess? No.
Nope.
Okay. We will now recess for attorney-client meeting. We're going to conduct a closed attorney-client meeting as authorized by Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C3 to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. And we will return after this closed meeting. Are we going in here? Are we going in here?
...
Okay, on the eighth, I attended the FISH second Thursday meeting. It was a presentation by lots of the local chambers. Later that same day, I attended a Corridors of Commerce readiness advancement advisory group. On the ninth, the scale, I attended that. There were presentations by Treehouse, HART, Damascus Gueye, and a 2015 regional development guide presentation by the Met Council. Fourteenth, emergency management training, the NIMS training for part one of four out at the RTF, was well-attended, but maybe 60 people there, something like that. MICA board meeting the same day, on the 15th, I met with Eric Pratt about legislative issues. I was particularly interested in the North Star Act that would make the entire state a sanctuary state. And legislative leaders are saying that it's not ready for primetime, that that will not be taken up this session. There may be hearings, but it won't pass. So on the 15th, no, the 16th, TPP Advisory Committee Work Group, and then also later that day, the Unique Project Scoring Committee I'm on for the Met Council, there are six projects that we all have to score. It's kind of a long process, takes a lot of time. Three of the projects were more study-type projects, and they don't score well. So there's really, I think, three projects that we're going to be zeroing in on to fund in the unique projects category. That's the end of my report, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Beer.
Thank you. On the, I believe it was the sixth, our post-board workshop. On the seventh, had the pleasure of meeting the first family going into the Allos fourplex. And HART was there with loads and loads and loads of stuff, and people coming alongside a single dad with two kids. So it was great to get that thing running, get it off the ground. As mentioned, on the eighth, FISH had chambers. On ninth, scale, had their partners, which was always refreshing because we had our deliver what matters this morning. We talked about the partners at FRC, and some of these were the same, some were different, just to see the work that is getting done that are driving outcomes in a positive direction. Let's see, on the 13th, had the FISH Program Committee meeting. Later that day, had AFSCME as well. Fourteenth, emergency management training, would you call it the NIMS training? Same training. Also, on the 15th, met with Pratt on the same issue. Maybe, I don't know, are we just getting emails and phone calls? Or maybe everyone's getting email and phone calls on the North Star Act? So that was one, wanted to talk. You heard what Commissioner Alrick had to say about that. Later that day, met with some, from our transformation team. Sixteenth, just kind of shadowed the Senate Elections Committee, where Julie Hansen had them out at the, kind of following about from Public Works all the way back to the Government Center East. And that part of it seems pretty darn ironclad. So I know there's, we've got an election coming up, so there might be some interesting comments about that. But from what I saw and the way that we do it, once we get those ballots, they're under lock and key. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. February 7th, I had the meeting with the courts and the judge, and Commissioner Wakeman-Brecky and Administrator Vermillion was in attendance. Also, on September 7th, I attended the developmental disabilities meeting with service providers. And their, part of their discussion was the grant that we had approved at the end of the last year to get people back to work. And how do we do that, and what's the best way to do that? So I think there's more discussion on that that's coming up. February 7th, I had to also attend the Park Advisory Committee. February 8th, I had a meeting with the Executive Director of MELSA. February 8th, I had a meeting with Mayor Matt Lehman of Shakopee. February 9th was our scale meeting. February 9th was also my meeting with Commissioner Vermillion. February 12th was Dakota Scott Workforce Executive Committee. February 13th was the CDA. The CDA, well, like we talked about earlier, approved the work that's being done on the Housing Trust Fund. I always get that mixed up with housing trust. For, three of the four community land trust homes have sold in New Prague. One is under, they're working on the contract for the last one. That's all I have to say about CDA. The February 14th was the emergency management training. February 14th was the Scott County Historical Society. February 15th, I had a meeting with Patty Freeman. February 16th, Dakota Scott Workforce Development Board. We had a presentation by Tim O'Neill from DED and talked about Dakota and Scott County. February 16th, I had the MELSA Finance Committee meeting. And I think we came up with some agreement with Ramsey County on...
Good.
February 20th, I had a Health and Human Services update from Director, or Dahl. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the sixth, we worked the township, met a couple issues, kind of similar to the one out in Marystown today, where there's some people with a landlot thing. You know, we'll keep on kind of popping up around here, but hopefully there will be, it doesn't look like there's a lot of happening between the two parties. So, anyhow, on the eighth, I had 35 Solutions, met Frank Hornstein, who's the Chair of the State House Committee on Roads and Transformation. He was there and just gave us his insights of what's going to happen.
What went on?
Sorry, how much do we hear?
You don't have to circle.
So then, on the eighth, that evening, Spring Lake Township met. They had a couple issues. There's some people, some house problems and some junk in people's yards that keeps on expanding. And so we're looking into that, going to try to get that taken care of. On the ninth, the scale meeting. On the 12th, Planning and Zoning Met. Excuse me, on the 13th, Prior Lake, had their, they've changed their meetings now to the second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday of the month. And one of the big items there was the Spring Lake Annexation Agreement is getting closer. And I don't know, maybe it's there already, but at that point, it was not done yet. On the 14th, the emergency management training, the NIMS that was mentioned. On the 15th, I went out to the Soil and Water Conservation District, partly because I just want to see what they thought about what was going on that night. I would act Spring Lake Township, that I also attended the McMahon Lake Outlet. And it seems like everybody, almost everybody's happy about it. There's a few people that were not happy that they're going to get assessed for the cleaning of the drainage coming out of there. They have to go down to like one millimeter because the milfoil seeds are that big, and so they can't let those go through. And it'll cost a couple thousand bucks a year, so I don't know, a hundred or some bucks a household. But these people are not on the lake, and, but they, their water from their homes does go into the lake, so they're, they would be assessed. And then on the 16th, last Friday, pretty much most of the day, I had what was called Life of a Ballot, met out at the Highway Department, and just to see what happens to a ballot and, you know, from the time it's either sent in or asked for, comes, you know, somebody comes in and how it's checked out, then we came here to the county. And so what happens with the machines, the counters, where it's all stored. You know, it's, there's a lot of moving parts. And it's, I don't think anything is 100% safe, but this is a lot safer than it was ever before, let's be honest. So, you know, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolf. All right, February 6th, I also, I think we all attended the workshop after the board meeting. On February 7th, Leslie and I had our quarterly meeting with the mayor and city administrator of Belle Plaine. Two things I want to mention about Belle Plaine. Extended access opens at the Belle Plaine Library on March 1st. We're going to have a celebration there on February 29th at 1:30 PM. Just a short, short one, because that's been long awaited, if you want to join us. The other thing we talked about with the mayor and city administrator is, of course, they're finalizing the plans around the Emma Crumbies Orchard and what's happening there. And really want to help get the word out that Belle Plaine really did extensive study about the trees, because a lot of people are sad about those apple trees leaving. And a lot of people don't understand that those apple trees really are towards the end of their productive life. And many have fungus, have some other issues. So they have hired a company who's going to take out the trees. But it's, it's hard for people to understand because they think of fruit trees as lasting forever. And so just wanted to pass on that message that there was a lot of study done to see if there was any other option for those trees. Also, on February 7th, I attended a meeting with, spearheaded by Ally McNeil from our Lot Library, to discuss National Law Day, which is May 1st. And the team really focused on two, two things to try and educate people on and bring people in. And one is the whole with election season, the ballot and the integrity of elections. So what we've kind of talked about with the Senate Committee. And then the other is about jury service, because still trying to really help educate people about jury duty. It's a duty and a privilege and a right. So fun to see a real interdisciplinary team working to have some events happening on May 1st. February 7th was that county court policy meeting I attended with Commissioner Brennan. February 8th was my monthly meeting with the county administrator. February 8th was also the CAP Agency Finance Committee meeting. February 9th was our scale monthly general membership meeting, which went well, even though we had a full, full schedule. Then I headed to DC. On February 10th was Human Services Committee meetings all day. 11th continued out there, on the 11th, 12th, 13th. The 13th was my meeting with, you know, Congresswoman Craig and staffers from both Senate offices. And I think we got some, some good work done about getting their help to write a letter and maybe even take some other action to communicate with the UP Railroad about the different delays we've been having and things that are happening on our projects. So hopefully, some good results from that work. February 14th, MICA monthly meeting. February 15th was the Scott County Community Corrections Advisory Council meeting, where we approved the annual report for the community corrections today. So that meeting was really finalizing and reviewing that. February 15th was Together We Can Committee meeting. February 16th, I only was able to attend the part of the Senate Committee out at Public Works. So I hear lots of questions, lots of good. I really think Julie and all our staff, or the election staff that I saw, did such a great job answering questions and hosting people. And I know they have a lot of work to do every day, and things like this are extra work. So I really appreciate that and thank them. On February 16th, also had the bi-weekly scale legislative briefing. And today had monthly check-in with Human Services Director Barb Dahl. One thing I wanted to mention for everybody, though, is tomorrow's AMC Legislative Committee, so I'll be up there in the afternoon. But I really hope that each of us can get up to, I mean, it's great if we can spread out our time, if you're not coming there tomorrow, over the next six weeks, to maybe connect with Perry and get up there and make some visits to continue to talk about our priorities, or when you're going to breakfast, that kind of thing. But I do think it makes a difference if they see us up there. So I would ask you to consider that. And that's the end of my report. Administrator, I think we're calling her Commissioner Vermillion, right? Administrator Vermillion, what news do you have for us today?
I have nothing further to update you on.
Well, thank you very much. After we adjourn, we'll be going into workshop setting to talk about the CCBHC, Solid Waste, the Communication Plan, and fourth quarter financial update. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.